With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proclamation, um. Chief Mitchell? Proclamation appreciation for the interim chief of police Windham City September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three to January sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Whereas Jack and Karen, the mayor of town Bartonville on behalf of the town council wishes to express a town sincere appreciation to Wendell Mitchell for his medical services. Town of Bartonville in this capacity is interim chief of police. And whereas Chief Mitchell retired in the town Bartonville Department in absence of a chief, whereas Chief Wendell Mitchell served distinction and honor. And whereas Chief Mitchell dedicated, Chief Mitchell's dedication has been instrumental in enhanced order of town Bartonville services. And whereas Chief Mitchell has been a valuable asset to my county chief of service. Now, therefore, I, Jack and Karen, the mayor of town Bartonville, have to, on behalf of the town council, you hereby proclaim June the sixtheenth, two thousand twenty four, as Chief Wendell Mitchell day in the town of Bartonville, in all of our appreciation of all of our services.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure, he won't be, will he?
Public participation, if you'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a form, hand it to Shannon, please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during public participation, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody? No?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Appointed representative liaison reports, number one, Upper Trinity. No, Dale's not here, okay. Uh, number two, Denton County Emergency Service District.
So Chief Barton, we have him in, working right today.
Okay. We all got the report, right? Okay.
Yeah.
If, uh, there he is.
Step on up.
Your timing is perfect, Keith.
Just some time.
Yeah, we just got through with you.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak promptly here, but, uh, um, as you may not be aware, in addition to your typical monthly report, you also got an end of the year report, so, um, so just to kind of, I'm not going to go through all the data, but we did make a thirty two hundred, over thirty two hundred call, that represents about a two and a half percent increase in call volume, which is a good, healthy growth compared to some past years in two thousand twenty one, we had like a thirty three percent increase, so it's good to see we back to a normal level, so, um, a lot of ton of activities, we had over a hundred and forty two community events, two hundred CPR, I mean, just you, we're just doing a lot of good things in the community, and that's important because we've talked in the past how it's important that we stay engaged in the community, I think. Uh, one of my things I always say is it takes a village to raise a child, it also takes a community to keep a community safe, so we have to work together, and we do that being engaged in the community, so a lot of good things happening, uh, probably the two biggest things that happened, uh, last month, um, December nineteenth, the county judge in the commissioners' court, uh, commissioners' court appointed our new, uh, board of commissioners for the E S D two, so we have those names, and they did have some equal representation from each of the towns. Uh, they did agree to, they want to have the same president and treasurer on both boards for, just for continuity sake, and then so, but they weren't, they're not getting sworn in till this Thursday, so Thursday is our typical board of commissioners meeting, and so they will be doing the swearing in, uh, that night, so there's a lot of work to do, um, just to give you an example, some of the items and things they've got to talk about is who's their attorney gonna be, so they have to discuss that, their banking, and a lot of simple things, so some baby steps to get them up and running to build that infrastructure for the new E S D two, so in the meantime, uh, we've just been doing a lot of research, I've got about half a dozen committees working on various things from apparatus needs to staffing needs to policies, um, to everything, even our, we're still continuing our audit, if you remember back when we started this whole process, we did one audit just on the firefighters' retirements, the missing retirement funds, and also their overtime miscalculations, so that's been completed, we're actually on the final phase of making sure all that's wrapped up and done, but then there's the bigger, who, what, when, where, how did this all happen one, which is a much more thorough, much more expensive, talking to tune about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, to do a very comprehensive, uh, audit to see, so this never happens again, and also to get some best practices on. Look at everything from our job descriptions, look at flow charts and policies, how are we doing things, how can we do things better? And putting the, the appropriate amount of redundancies and checks and balances to make sure something like this doesn't happen again, so a lot of good things, and so we're trying to get a lot together, hopefully my goal is by, say, maybe as early as February, March, start taking some proposals or recommendations to the, the new, uh, board of commissioners, so that way we can start kind of get some direction on where to go. Um, the other thing actively got planned for him is, uh, I wanted to, anytime you get new commissioners, I'm sure the same way with council members, you know, some of them have some fire and EMS experience, and some of them don't, so I've got, the challenge I have is I gotta get them all up on the same page. And sometimes that's something as simple as educating the difference between a fire engine and a fire truck, you know, what is the difference when I use terminology in the future about stuff, or the difference between a firefighter and a captain, a driver, and a paramedic, what do those all mean, so we're gonna have a Denton County E S D one oh one class, basically, where they're gonna be educated and kind of get them up to speed on everything from our demographics to our response area, to, um, our organization chart and how we operate, so it's intended to kind of get them all up to speed, so when the future, when I come to them with a proposal, and I'm talking about a proposal, they don't like, what is a fire truck? I thought that's the same thing, we're not talking about the same thing, so it makes you sure they are all on the same page, so. A lot of good things happened, as you can imagine, we're, we're still going high, paying pretty quick pace, but we have slowed down a little bit. After the election, I told our staff, I said, look, we've been really going on high speed, I said, you need to rediscover who you were, go reintroduce yourself back to your families and kind of enjoy the holidays, because it's important, because it's, it's just not healthy to kind of maintain that pace, but we've been in a crisis mode for so long, for the whole past year, we're shifting, we're, we've gone through what I call a institutional crisis, we really have kind of a structure, institutional crisis, we've been dealing with, where we were all running towards the fire. I now tell our staff, the fire is out. It's, it's out, we're kind of in that rekindling, making sure overhaul, it's not going to come back, but we're shifting gears to an operational tempo of where we need to start looking at our operational gaps. This last year was all about the institutional, getting the structure right, now it's about the operational needs that we have and the gaps that we have there, so a lot of exciting things to look forward to, a lot of things to do, but, uh, it's just a, take it one step at a time, so. With that, I know I said a lot of things, but with that, I'll take any questions. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Number three, police department statistics, Chief Mitchell.
Hello again, mayor, council, staff, and everybody watching at home. Uh, Wendell Mitchell, interim chief Bartonville Police Department. So, um, I'm here with y'all's, uh, December monthly stats right here, but the first thing I want to say is not only thank you to the team that I've worked with, uh, since September twenty fifth, the police department, but also thanks to this council and this community, this is an incredibly supportive community here and a wonderful council, y'all definitely understand, uh, speaking from the fire department, y'all definitely understand what it takes to make public services work in a community, and I appreciate y'all's cooperation, y'all's understanding as we work through some things the last several months, so, uh, you have a great team here, you have a great team. Um, I also want to say that, uh, Happy New Year, and, uh, and, uh, mention that, uh, you know, we just had a freeze, the way, we had our four, we have our four days of winter here in Texas, and I want to point out that, you know, we had some minorly slick streets, but I want to thank Thad over there for helping us out, we had some salt put down on the roadways in some of our troubled areas we've had here in the past. Uh, definitely helped people getting around, and I know the fire department was appreciative too, we salted a couple of curves out there heading back toward Argyle, that'd be some problem areas too, so, um, if y'all will, uh, want to run through your monthly statistics, there is, there is one thing I want to point out, uh, in here specifically, y'all will note over end of year in two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three, you will see an increase in number of calls for service there, and that totals about three hundred and fifty calls for service, a lot of that is in self-initiated activity, which is really good, this speaks really high of y'all's organization here. I will say over the last, I, I did an evaluation, uh, over the last six months, I looked back at the, what I call quarter number three from July, uh, August, September, and then looked at October, November, December, and I noticed a distinct difference between those two quarters, in the last three months, the officers have really stepped it up, I've asked them to get out there, um, as y'all have, focusing on the thoroughfares through town, making sure we're addressing some of those traffic problems that we're having in this community, that is so important to make sure that we address, making sure we're highly visible on our through, uh, fair, on our through roadways, as well as up in our business district, addressing calls up there. And I'm happy to point out, we've been, I think it's five or sixty W I's we've taken off the streets, uh, here in Bartonville, so which, and again, that says something, that's a quality of life issue, those cause serious bodily injuries, and they have crashes, and we'll make sure that we address those, so something else I'll point out too is that this is just the beginning, uh, for this department right here. We've been working on employee health and organizational health the last several months, and we're getting that in place, and yes, I feel very confident with the new chief coming in here, that's going to continue to grow and develop in this organization, and y'all will begin developing a culture, something that I feel is very important for any town or any organization and stuff, to be in developing that culture, and it is occurring, and I'm so proud of y'all and stuff like that, it's, it's gonna be a great, it's gonna be a great time here for the town of Bartonville, because this truly is a gem of a community, as I've said before, so, um, I, I anticipate that we will continue to see an increase in calls for service going up, because if you have people that are happy to, happy working someplace, feel dialed in, feel committed, you're gonna continue to see an increase, because they'll be more productive out there on the streets, they'll enjoy working here more, and they'll get out there and they'll do their jobs and stuff, so, um, with that, I'm gonna leave it open, if there's any questions y'all have specifically about the reports or any calls we've had this last month that you are aware of, so.
And the, uh, the U I's, it's because of the holidays, or, um, this wasn't a trend, was it?
No, I don't believe this is related specifically to the holidays, D W I's happen year round, now, law enforcement does get out during the holidays, we have enforcement actions we'll take across the state of Texas and across the nation, we focus on D W I specifically during the holidays, but I believe this is an all the time problem, is what it is, what we've got is, uh, and I'll go ahead and brag on him, Officer Martin, uh, he takes a shine, and he enjoys working in D W I's and stuff, and it's one of those things, he's got a great sergeant that's been lifting him up, and he's been out there focusing on that, uh, and again, I think you're gonna continue to see him and stuff like that, they're just, it's just, it's just a fact of life, so.
Question on the, uh, on the traffic stops, we've been kind of watching this over the last two or three months, you know, as we tried to, uh, help regulate and watch this traffic as, as it flows through, just kind of curious, I talked to some of the officers, and I see them out there on the streets as to, of that hundred and fourteen stops, is that, what percentage of that would be on the infrastructure versus exterior of the town?
I didn't break that down by four oh seven, of course, that's something that I can, on the outside, so I can break down, I do know that we work, we've got McMakin, Porter, and Jeter, those are three of the main roadways that we do work, as a matter of fact, when I came into work this morning, they had somebody pulled over on Jeter reminding what the speed was and stuff as I drove by, um, so a lot of those do happen on Jeter, and it's not just the speeding, a lot of it are the stop signs that have been installed, uh, making sure that people are adhering to those, those stop signs that the town has put in place. I do believe you'll probably see, start seeing a slight, as the winter months pick up, you'll start seeing a slight decrease to the number of bikers that you have running stop signs and stuff, but I anticipate in the spring, when they start pedaling their two wheelers again and stuff like that, we may have to remind them again to make sure they're following the traffic laws through town, so.
Appreciate what y'all are doing, the citizens have noticed as well, and, and they think that the, and I think I was talking with the mayor about the, the numbers of, of the shows on our traffic count, but the citizens really appreciate the visibility of seeing those officers out there and pulling them over and knowing that they're out there at least slowing the traffic down, and then trying to see what we can do about maybe helping this cross traffic to, to stay outside the city.
Yeah, and, and remember, one good thing about traffic stops is when the officers get to activate their lights, and if you're working those areas like Jeter, you're working, uh, Porter, you're working McMakin, even if you're up on four oh seven, other people see that as well, not only the citizens, but people who maybe think and they want to stop and maybe commit a, a theft at Kroger or something like that, and they'll think otherwise, it's one of those ways we can be highly visible in the public, so. You're very welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief. Number four, town administrator, December tw- twenty twenty three.
Thank you, mayor, council, uh, one thing I'll dovetail into what, uh, Chief Mitchell was talking about on the salting. Uh, one of the goals the mayor had set out is, you know, we've, we've struggled in the past to get some of our interior streets assaulted as tech stop focuses on the interstates, the county's focusing on the F M roads, and it's difficult, and, you know, Bartonville's got a lot of hills and a lot of intersections, so she tasked me to go out and go find a way, so we found a company, and through this entire weather event, I communicated with the mayor on Scudder and Chief Mitchell as, as this came through, so there was a lot of communication uh, going into this to make sure that we had a, a situation where y'all were safer this time around, and that we won't have that again, where we have ambulances sliding off into the ditch or anything like that, so, um, again, that was, that was, that was a goal the mayor set, and, you know, we, when you've got people working around you who are, are good, I get, I, you know, I rely on them, and so we had an uneventful event, and I was glad for that. If you'll go to page thirty one in your packet where your financials begin, uh, you know, we're a quarter in, you'll start to see some trends in the financials, uh, twenty five percent of the budget year will be accounted for in these financials, uh, if you go onto page thirty two. Uh, property taxes, we received three hundred and seven thousand, uh, in December. If you'll see, we're tracking actually right percentage wise of collections where we did last year, we're actually slightly ahead of our, our percentage of collection, so, um, as January numbers come in, that'll be probably the, almost the rest of it, some people will pay late uh, into February, but, uh, we'll start to see those final numbers come in and see how close, uh, tad, or D C A D was on those projections. We expect it to be really, uh, uh, right in line. Sales taxes, uh, again, we're wanting to see less than seventy five percent remaining to, to be collected in these, and sales taxes again are running ahead of projections, even though we projected an increase, so, uh, sales taxes and, and drink taxes are healthy through the community. Uh, franchise fees are tracking, uh, right along, again, we talked about that a little bit last time, that's all the utilities that are running through our right of ways, they, rights of way, they pay the town for that access, so, um, as the, more of those utilities run through, which we're seeing that big one that's ready to come up, McMakin, we don't have a permit for that one yet, those should continue to increase, uh, probably not substantially, but we should continue to see healthy numbers there. Development fees again, until that, uh, night's landing comes in, we won't see anything there, and that will be almost all offset with fees related to it anyway, from inspection to engineering. So permit fees, that's for the home fees, uh, the home construction fees, those are healthy again, um, we projected an increase, and yet we're sitting uh, better than we anticipated, it's sixty seven percent left. And the municipal court, uh, also tracking ahead, the officers have been very busy, we discussed that during the, the last presentation, um, they are working hard to change those behaviors um, that are the resulting of the lowered speed limit and the stop signs is trying to get people to, if they're gonna cut through, that's fine, please observe the speed limit and the stop signs. Do you have any questions on the revenue, we're in, we're in good shape on the revenue side. Uh, if you look at the next page, you see the trend, again, it continues, you see the spikes and then the dip, and then we're just, we're continually increasing, other than those little quarterly payments, um, we are on a healthy trend to continue to increase those sales taxes. Uh, I got rid of the second graph, because I think this one tells a better picture. Um, if you look at overall general fund expenditures, uh, again, we're looking to have, uh, seventy five percent or more remaining, uh, in this category. Uh, we're, we're right in line, um, municipal court is running a little hot, and again, I discussed that last time, the prosecutor costs us a little more because our caseload's so high. Um, so we're incurring additional expenses because court is running thirty to forty people a month through at this time, and so it's substantially higher than it was in the past.
Anticipate we'll have a budget amendment.
We will, absolutely, we'll have a mid-year, there's a lot of other things in, in police, when we, I'll get to that when we had to have a new vote to put in, so, yeah, there will definitely be a, a mid-year. Do you have any questions on that part of the expenditures, the overall picture? Department-specific administration. Um, again, we're tracking healthy there, supplies, a lot of that was computers, most of that twenty three thousand were the new computer systems, if you look at that line item, one, two, three, four, five, six down. Um, was that five, is that six? Um, so again, we're tracking healthy, and we're starting to see trends that we're staying on budget, uh, for most categories, some of them will, uh, burn a little faster early on, and then will die off as we go along. We have not spent anything on capital yet for, and we've talked about doing some striping and some other things to improve the building, uh, uh, a little more, we haven't done any of those things yet. Any questions on admin? We'll go to the last page, police. Again, we're tracking well on police except for maintenance, uh, that is the fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand of the maintenance is the new engine in our police unit, uh, again, that's, that's now done, it's back in service, uh, we do plan on going to crime control and asking for them to fund that, uh, because that is an allowable expenditure, and they do have the funds, so, uh, if we're successful, that'll bring the maintenance budget back down into a normal percentage for expenditures. Um, and again, if we get our new police unit in March, uh, we'll start to see some of those maintenance costs go back down, because we'll have two barely new units, and.
Kind of ask, where, where are we with the new cruiser, just.
This is still projecting March, we just, we don't have an update yet, I've asked Cutter to go out there and, and see what he can find.
And March would be, it's got all the decals, everything ready to go, or do you still have to?
You're gonna get me guessing, council member, um, that, they said delivery March, but again, uh, not knowing, I don't know if that's delivered to the upfitter, or if that's delivered to us.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll hopefully by the next council meeting or one of my weekly updates, I'll bold that if I get an update on that, so y'all can pull that out. Do you have any questions on that? If you go to the next, this is our quarterly investment reports, um, again, I don't go, need to go into a lot of detail unless Keith has a question.
Thank you, thank you for putting that in good investments, uh, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Uh, fifty four grand in interest for a quarter.
It, well, again, it goes back to, we talked about that last year, when we got the lump sums, they were not indexed as they should have been, and once we realized that that was the case, I did a little hard negotiation, threatened to move the money, um, and so we are now indexed, so we will always track with what all the other investments pools are doing. And then talking to Shannon, you'll notice on the, the page thirty eight, we still have a hundred and twenty eight dollars in logic uh, invested, that is where the previous bond money went in, so we are keeping that open and available, should, you know, once that bond retires, this may not be the interest market to go out and get another bond for roads, but we want to keep that available, because that's where the bond funds, uh, usually go, so we're keeping that there and active, do you have any other questions? That's all I've got, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, well, not on financial, but the, um, the street, uh, survey, the traffic.
Where, that's next.
That's next, yeah, okay.
Uh huh, yeah, number five, thanks for bringing that up, two thousand twenty three traffic study.
Mayor, I'm gonna request that y'all table this till the next meeting, I was just over here talking to Shannon, neither one of us realized, you don't have it in your packet.
Okay.
What I was wondering, I didn't save the packet.
I was. I was sitting here looking and going, and I said, Sharon, it's not in my packet, and she said, look at the agenda, and it doesn't have the link where you can click on it, we apologize. I proofed it, and I apologize as well, we, we both missed it.
It's all right.
Um, I can say.
Yeah, we'll look at it next month, but the, the bottom line on the traffic study is the stop signs are helping, yes, so, yeah.
You see increase, you'll see decreases all the way through town, and what I'll do in the interim, I still want to do that next time, so that it's out for the public to see as well. Um, I'll send that information out separately, there's already a write-up on it as far as where you're seeing the decreases in the interior, while at the same time, McMakin, four oh seven, they're all going up, so as things grow around the town, uh, you're gonna see those increases, but instead of seeing those increases, uh, along the cut-through route, uh, it has actually gone down, they, they are working.
That's great, that's if the citizens want to see.
Combination of signs and our officers out and about.
Always enforcement.
Enforcing the rules, so.
So they're doing, they're doing a fantastic job, and again, if that was the goal, which it was, that's, they're working, so I'll send that out to y'all, but again, I'd like for that, I would ask that you table that.
Sure.
Until the next meeting, so I can actually present that to you.
We don't need any action on that, no motion or anything. No, okay, just table that till next month, okay, thank you. Number H, consent agenda, this agenda consists of non-controversial housekeeping items required by law. Items may be approved with a single motion, items may be removed from the consent agenda by any council member by making such a request prior to the motion and a vote on the consent agenda, number one, consider approval of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty three regular meeting minutes. Number two, discuss and consider approval of a resolution of the town council of the town of Bartonville ordering a general election to be held on May fourth, two thousand twenty four, for the purpose of electing one mayor and two council members, place two and place four, for two-year terms each, providing for a joint service contract with Denton County, authorizing the town administrator to execute the joint service contract on behalf of the town. Do you have a motion?
I'm making a motion that you can approve consent agenda one and two.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries four zero, thank you, council. Public hearings and regular items. Uh, number one, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the town of Bartonville Code of Ordinance as chapter fourteen, exhibit A, article fourteen point oh two, ordinance three six one dash oh five, zoning regulation for the town of Bartonville to establish a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through and approving an accompan- accompanying site plan on three point, one point three four acre track or parcel of land situated in Lot Three, Block A of D C F W S D, number seven retail center addition in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The subject property is located west of the intersection of Justin Road and East Jeter Road in Bartonville, Texas, the applicant is Jennifer Ganzer of Kimberly Horn and Associates on behalf of Andy's Frozen Custard. Town file, C U P dash two thousand twenty three dash oh oh six and S P. Town file C U P dash two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh six and S P two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh three. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of five to zero at its January third, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Staff presentation, Thad?
We only do that for clarity for the citizens. We don't do that to punish you, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's, it's only for clarity, so because we've had some questions. Um, this is a uh, again, a C U P because of the drive-through and a site plan for Andy's Frozen Custard. Um, I'll make my presentation. Jennifer Ganser with Kimberly Horn is here to answer any questions you may have. I will roll through fairly quickly. Please stop me if you have specific questions because I I could take forever going through this. Um, again, this is on a corner that is uh in the Kroger parking lot. It's designed for this. So when we look at it, uh, uh, this is the right location for this type of use. Um, that's again nineteen hundred and forty-nine square feet drive-through, no inside dining. Uh, it's a drive-through and it has a walk-up window to the outside. Thank you. Uh, there's a good picture of the the location as well, please. Keep on one more. Uh, there's the look of the Andy's Frozen Custard. Um, these are the criteria listed. Uh, again, I won't go through all of them because we'll address those when I talk about how they are met. Again, uh, it's in the right location for the traffic. Um, okay, criteria evaluation, comp plan objective three point one advises town to limit non-residential uses to nodal development along four oh seven. Uh, again, McMakeen Road and East Jeter Road intersection is where this is located, and that is the right area. Um, this zone supports commercial uses. Um, again, this is going to be confined to this commercial node. It's not going to expand those uses beyond that. This goes into criteria four, northern access drive to the site contains sidewalks and crosswalks for pedestrian use. So that is consistent with what's out there now. Um, the required driveway spacing um to has two access points to ensure mitigation of traffic impacts on local streets, and it meets all other zoning district standards. Uh, the recommendation from P and Z was to approve. That was five zero, one to the site plan. Again, this one, it meets zoning district standards. I'm not gonna go through all those. Keep going one more. There is evaluation. Uh, the COAs, when it says that in this presentation, those are conditions of approval. Um, again, if you approve this with those conditions of approval, it will meet all zoning district standards. Uh, it is auto-oriented shopping center. So again, the architectural, the layout uh meets what we're looking for. Driveway spacing provides the sidewalks again. Um, they provide twenty-seven parking spaces. Uh, this will be important based uh when we get to the SWIG issue uh or application next. Uh, minimum required parking is twenty, so they have seven excess parking spaces. Um, and then again, emergency access is through their access drive that's already in place. There are tree buffers. And so again, the orientation is right per the ordinance, but also they have tree buffers out to four oh seven. Uh, water and sewer is already provided. And there's uh lighting. We do have a condition of approval for that. We want to make sure it meets our lighting standards. We don't have a dark sky standard, but we do have pretty strict standards for projecting out onto adjacent uses. And again, that was recommended approval by uh Planning and Zoning Commission, but with conditions, if you go to that, uh, parking lighting shall be installed to operate so not to reflect or shine on adjacent properties. This is down from Wolf Run, so we want to make sure that that lighting does not impact Wolf Run and that neighborhood up there. Um, and again, the trash receptacle shall be screened by an eight-foot tall uh screening constructive masonry materials of like and similar to the primary structure. And that's the presentation. I'll answer questions, but again, Jennifer Ganser is here with Kimberly Horn. If y'all have specifics, one concern that she was able to really explain for P and Z was uh traffic possibly backing up to FM four oh seven, uh especially like opening week. Now, we'll, we'll deal with that with our officers if they have a big crush that opening week. But if you would roll back, Jennifer, do you mind if you come up? Is that the best one, Jennifer?
Cancer with Kimberly Horn. Uh, this is the landscape plan, so maybe if you had just the site plan, yeah, this one should work. So uh P and Z did have a concern about the proximity of this entry drive with FM four oh seven, knowing that there's a deceleration lane and a lot of folks will be coming into Kroger through here. So they were curious if someone, you know, say this cars are parked in this lane, someone's having a hard time turning in here, would that cause truck or traffic to back up on FM four oh seven? So I pointed out, if that does happen to be a traffic pattern, folks will naturally learn to come down around to the drive entrance here, which will direct them straight into both the drive-throughs for Andy's and SWIG that you'll hear about in the next item.
How many cars can you get in there without it, before it actually backs up to four oh seven?
Um, there's six stacking spaces within the drive-through itself.
Mm-hmm.
So this was more of a hypothetical. I mean, I guess if there are two cars parked here trying to get out on FM four oh seven, folks might have a hard time turning left in here. But like I said, they they would be able to come down and around through this entrance so that they're not backing up on.
Come down Jeter and come the back way or there's another driveway.
Another drive that SWIG will be proposing that's around here too. So lots of different options for access into the site.
That explanation staff didn't have any concerns about it.
Right. So this has a driveway component to it. My understanding is that Andy's uses um full-time employees with iPads instead of a speaker, loudspeaker and all that. So we don't have to worry about loudspeakers, sound projecting, any of that sort of stuff, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So thank you. You have one owner for both SWIG and Andy's, right?
It's one property owner that owns the site and it's separate leases.
Separately, right, but it's one.
It'll be one owner, one lot.
That's what I thought, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to do some public hearings. Time being seven oh, seven oh nine, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Time being seven oh nine, I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion?
I really don't have anything to add from what we talked about.
Nothing else.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the C U P for Andy's as presented.
Nice, okay. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Council. Number two, conduct a public hearing, consider ordinance amending the Town of Bartonville Code of Ordinance as Chapter fourteen, Exhibit A, Article fourteen point oh two, Ordinance three sixty-one dash oh five, zoning regulations for the town of Bartonville to establish a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through and approving an accompanied site plan on a three-quarter acre track of parcel of land situated in Lot Three, Block A of D C F W S D number seven retail center addition in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The subject property is located west of the intersection of Justin Road and East Jeter Road in Bartonville. The applicant is Rama Mon- Mondanat of Bowman Engineering and Consulting on behalf of SWIG Bartonville. Town file C U P twenty twenty-three dash oh oh seven and S P twenty twenty-three dash oh oh four. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of five to zero at its January third, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Thad?
Town Council, um, Rama is not here tonight, but we have uh Kofi, what, how do you pronounce your last name? I do. Uh, here with Bowman Engineering, if y'all have any questions for SWIG. Um, again, this is adjacent. This is a little different than anything we've seen in a while. Uh, maybe y'all have seen a few where we've got one parcel and two businesses. Um, this is drive-up only. There is no uh walk-up component to it. It is a drink shop. So again, we were mo- most concerned about the uh staging of the vehicles. Uh, they exceed what we require for uh vehicle staging for that drive-through. If you'll run through, again, same location, they're gonna be right next to each other. Apparently, they've developed uh similarly uh across the country. So again, SWIG, they they feel like they offset business hours. Uh, the actual owners were, or the operators were here for P and Z and the discussion was, what if you get a crush all at the same time? It's very unusual. They have different operating hours when they're busy. Um, so again, this is this drink shop. It is consistent with our zoning and our comprehensive plan. Uh, the one thing on this uh, this site is they are per ordinance short one parking spot. Um, I have asked for, and I've been told I will receive a uh, basically they have a, it's not a shared parking agreement. The owner of the site, New Quest, basically all parking is shared. So we had requested a specific shared parking agreement between SWIG and Andy's Custard. But if they provide us the ground lease that says all parking is shared, that's doesn't even have to be an issue. We still have it in our ordinance and you can still uh pass it as presented. But again, we, I added one caveat that a ground lease showing that those parking spaces are all shared would address that concern. Um, this one had the same uh conditions as well. The lighting for the parking again will be addressed to make sure that it's not impacting the adjacent sites uh and the uh trash structure that uh will also have the masonry that matches the building. Uh, again, this one's just a little different. I can go through all of it, but it is landscaped. It meets all of our standards and uh again, P and Z recommended approval with those conditions. Oh, there was one other thing in there. Sorry, go back, uh. Where is it? One up. This one has a unique uh offset, our, their access drive to the south uh closest to Jeter is not fifty feet from the roadway, which is the standard for our uh per our ordinances. It's actually thirty-seven feet, but it aligns with the other access road that was approved for Kroger. So staff felt it was more important for those to align and not create an offset for safety than to be fifty feet from the intersection. So that is the one thing that is different about this site than the other. And again, we did not add a condition in there. We just, that was a preferred for our engineering and planning.
Did P and G have any?
No.
Okay.
Same explanation. Again, it's, it's better to have them line up than to be offset than and meet the fifty.
So is that an administrative variance or does it have to go to B of A for a variance or?
Administrative. And that's something that y'all can approve through here without having to request a variance.
But part of the C U P then?
It is part of the C U P.
Okay.
Site plan. Part of the site.
Okay. Um, and as far as the drive-through component, is it similar to Andy's Custard where do you have a speaker where you interact or do you have actual full-time employees with iPads taking orders?
My name, Kofi Ado, uh, address is twenty-eight oh five Dallas Parkway, Suite three ten, Plano, Texas, seven five zero nine three. It's similar to Andy's, uh, you don't have any speaker box. You just uh stop there with iPods taking orders. Yeah.
All the architectural components for both these are, that's controlled by four freshwater, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is correct.
From the drawing, uh, I think of as that entrance comes off of four oh sevens on the Jeter, they got, there's gonna be a double drive-through lane, is that not correct?
Yes, uh, that, we suggested we weren't requiring it that they put, you know, Andy's this way, SWIG this way because both, all of that uh drive-through traffic comes in the same area.
Okay. One of the concerns that I have on that would be, and I couldn't tell from the drawings I had, but as you, as they turn on to Jeter Road off of four oh seven, that first seven to ten foot there from that stop sign, that's got traffic is always cutting through there, and I don't know if it's trucks that are doing that or what, but there's a pretty good pothole that's always there and it runs about five or six foot into that piece of property. I'm just curious whether, when they looked at this, as to whether they can put some type of a curb or some type of a, a protective barrier there to keep that, that, those vehicles from coming in. Because if there's lighting that goes on with that double lane there, I think that that lighting is gonna fringe upon that across the Wolf Wolf Run up there, and I'd make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's part of our, the conditions of approval is to again, make sure the lighting does not project into Wolf Run. Um, we actually have received one comment from residents on this location, uh really unrelated to the uses, and it's that drainage there. It's mostly the Kroger Kroger trucks that run through there.
Yep.
Kroger keeps that too wet, or New Quest keeps that too wet right there, and the Kroger trucks are cutting through and keep tearing up the road right there. Operationally, we'll, we'll talk to them about how to address that.
Put a couple of boulders there, that'll stop that cut-through.
Maybe.
That, that's a new quest. That is.
Yeah, it's a drainage problem because water stands there and those trucks.
It's a pretty big, yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Um, I'll open the public hearings. Uh, time being seven seventeen, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Time being seven seventeen, I'll close a public hearing. Any more council discussion? No? Any other questions? No? You have a motion? To with the conditions.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero.
Click.
Thank you, Council. Number three, discuss and consider approval of a resolution appointing new members of Bartonville Crime Control and Prevention District. Um, staff presentation, Shannon?
Thank you. At one council meeting, we appointed um two people to the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and one of those dinner club. So she had resigned from CCPD so that she can be her professor on CCPD. So we had one vacant lot. And so staff advertised on through the website, we received one application for the.
That would be Mr. Weiss. Okay.
Here, if anybody wants to ask you any questions. Thanks for coming.
What may, what makes you wanna to volunteer for this group? Yeah, come on up.
Come on up, Steve.
Evening, Mayor and and Council. Um, I'm a new resident to Bartonville. I moved here in May, um, after retiring from the New York City Police Department and moving to Texas about three years ago. Um, always important to me in the community I live in is um how the police function. And um I saw the participation in this particular um uh area of the town government uh to allow me to have some participation in it and keep myself a little bit in the game, the policing game, even though I'm retired. It gives me a little bit of contact with my uh, my friends in the police. So um, you know, I'm here for the long haul in the town, so I'm vested in what's happens in the town, what happens in the future. And I feel like this is a good way to be involved in the, in the town and make sure that we're moving in the right direction that we all want to move in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mission?
I would like to thank him for his service, though. Uh, he's been involved in law enforcement from what is, from what is recrimination, from his uh application states, and that's an honorable thing that I appreciate the service. Thank you. And thank you for willing to volunteer and be a part of it. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve Stephen Weiss to the uh CCPD. Is that right?
Right. Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Close session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one. The town council will meet and close the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code, number one, Section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal advice of its attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding the sanitary sewer nuisance twelve eighty-seven Givens Road, Town of Bartonville, Texas versus Paula Harvey Cause, number two three dash one one four two nine dash four six seven, pending in the four hundred and sixty-seventh District Court of Denton County, Texas. Time being seven twenty-one, I convene.